Good evening and welcome again. We'll have a roll call, an invocation and pledge. Equipment doesn't break up.
Hurney.
Here.
Suter.
Here.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Here.
Mather.
Here.
No more. Jordan.
Here.
Wheeler. Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Pray with me. Lord, we're thankful for the freedom to meet in this place and mention you by name. We're grateful for our community and the people that live in it, and we're grateful for this council and for our mayor, and we pray that you would bless their business tonight. Give them wise and understanding hearts in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
That invocation was offered by the Reverend Larry Dogger of the Real Life Church. We're grateful to him and all the chaplains that help us here every other week. Thank you. First item on the agenda is public comments. I'll start on the left. Is there anybody on the left that has something they'd like to say tonight? I'll start in the back on the right and come forward. Anybody over here? Just be sure that that's on, speak into it, and tell us who you are.
My name is Eric Tietzey, and I am a citizen here in Lebanon. I'm in Ward 1. I'm also the founder-
Pick that up and hold it up.
Sorry about that. Is that better? I'm also the founder and owner of 417news.com. We've been going, I've sent some letters to council, I've been talking with City Administrator Hurd. We're having some issues. We're being denied access to some of the things that other publishing companies are given access to. We, the, every day, the city police department sends out a media report daily that has copies of police reports and things from the days before. I came in and spoke with Chief Hollstead and everything. He was fantastic to work with. Everything seemed like we were doing well. It went to City Administrator Hurd, and he's kind of put the kibosh on it and said that they're not going to provide that to me. So, we're having to go through now and do daily sunshine requests for the information, which, as you all know, is additional time and expense to the city to deal with that. It also slows down our time of getting this information. We are given the information, but we don't get it at the same time that everyone else gets it for our competitors. I continue to be told by Mr. Hurd that they're not going to provide that. I've gotten to the point where I've pretty well had my hands tied. I've had to contact the Attorney General's office. They forwarded it on to their attorneys now, and they're kind of going into the next phases of seeing what they need to do to get it taken care of from their end. I really, as I've said in my emails, I don't want that to be the way that it's done. I would like to figure out a way that it could be handled without having to go through the legal problems and the expense to the city. I don't see any legal reason that we should be being discriminated against versus the other media outlets in town. One of Mr. Hurd's concerns was that if, what he told me was that I wasn't a corporation, and as not being a corporation, that if there was a report that wasn't properly redacted and it was sent to me and then I put that information out, then he wouldn't have anybody go, to go after. I don't think that's at all accurate because I could be sued just as easily as anybody else, and I have much more to lose than anyone else would have to lose because it's me personally instead of a corporation. I don't see any, I haven't been able to find any legal precedent stating that that's a valid reason for a city to deny access to one media outlet over another, and I'm just curious if there's anything the council could do to move this forward and get this resolved so we don't have to go on into a legal issue and have additional expenses, and to stop the additional expenses and time that is involved at this point of doing daily sunshine requests, and Mrs. Sarnes having to deal with it and everything else, when we could simply be added to the email list that it's already going out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tietz. I know that that's an ongoing conversation between the city administrator and Mr. Allen, and you'll have an answer before very long.
I might advise council on Mr. Tietz's point, the administrators asked me to give a legal opinion on that, on what I think can do and should do, so I-
Is the city operating under a consent decree at this time?
Right. When I request information for my cases for various things, I make sunshine requests at least from sheriff's departments.
What was the settlement through the Attorney General's office a few years ago?
We were on probation for several months, so-
Has that probationary period expired?
Yeah, a long time ago. So, and again, we're, we're complying with law by getting, getting, we're complying by law because the information is provided via sunshine request, and so we're talking about a technicality, and that's why I've asked them to reach and research-
From my standpoint, you know, we have non, what I call non-traditional media. Now, we have .com media, which is fine, which provides service, but I want to make sure we're acting consistent with what we should be doing. So, I'll look into that and get a report back.
Is Mr. Tietz's comment correct, that other information is being disseminated to other media that he is not receiving?
No, that is not-
It's not other information. It's-
It is being disseminated voluntarily to other media-
That's correct.
-that is not being made available to him.
That's correct. That's, but he didn't, no, it's being made available.
Only upon request.
Upon request and delay.
He's got basically a daily sunshine request that he's making in the city compliance, like there would for any other city that asks for it.
But it's being mailed voluntarily to KLWT and to the Lebanon Daily Record, but he has to request it. Is that correct, yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. That's wrong.
How long have you been looking into it?
Me? From my standpoint, I have seen some of the emails back and forth. Mr. Hurd visited with me today and asked me to look into that, so I have not had a chance today to do it.
So, just today?
Yes, I've seen the exchanges of emails that have occurred, but I was asked to give them a second.
That was, yeah, he got the first email a week and a half ago, something like that. I mean, where we were both kind of-
So, I knew, I think I had seen the one where he was the one to contact the Attorney General. I had that's the one last time.
He's been in the same loop you guys have been in, so.
Thank you, Mr. Tietz. Any other public comment? We'll move to discussions and presentations, of which I know of none. Anybody have anything? And to approval of warrants. Most approve.
Second, without questions.
No questions.
Page 16. The fence repair on Elm, where was that at?
That was right below Shalley Village. We had a car that crashed into the fence. It's an in and out. It, we, it's an insurance claim. We've received funds from insurance.
Insurance claim, yeah. Page 28, quality air conditioning. I'm going to assume that's Civic Center.
Yes.
Page 31. Under the wellness program. Are those memberships?
The gyms?
Uh huh, and Tim Cole.
I would say yes.
So, somebody else is paying out of their paycheck and then we send it to them, or?
I can look, I don't know that answer. I can look into it.
Okay. I'd be curious. That's all I have for now.
Anybody else?
Yes, I had a question on page 23. These are from the Missouri Association of Municipal Utilities. Only because there's three identical charges of $3,922 each. How many for dues and fees?
What that is, our annual, our annual membership, and we divide it between water, sewer and electric, three ways.
Okay. I just wondered why there were three, so that's all.
Anybody else?
One in, one out.
Okay.
Have roll call.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
And we move to the January Treasurer's Report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Hurney.
And to ordinances. There being no second ratings, we'll move to first and second ratings, the first three of which deals with replats, so Noel, if you'll speak to these.
The first one is Heritage Baptist Church. They had three parcels of just Lebanon acreage, and we replanted into one lot, which is Heritage Baptist Temple Subdivision.
Are they planning on doing something? Are they doing something?
They're rebuilding a sanctuary and adding a park, adding a parking lot.
So, from their fire?
Yeah.
Could I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Move on to second.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
That was Council Bill 48, 4058, and has become ordinance 5310. Council Bill 4059 deals with another replat.
This is the old Al Salmon's Mobile Home Track that's out on West Elm, and it's now a lot called RSB Loop 44 Subdivision, which is supposedly a new home of a Dollar General store.
Mather.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Council Bill 4059 has been passed and is ordinance 5311. Council Bill 4060 deals with final plot with Pulpert and Hopkins additions.
This is the old Detroit Tool property, part of it, a parking lot and the industrial building, and Mr. Daryl Bishop has bought this to move some paint line in, plus he's going to rent other spaces out.
Motion to approve.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Move on to second. Second, second.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Thank you, Noel. Council Bill 4060 has been passed and is ordinance 5312. Council Bill 4061 deals with purchase of light fixtures for light bulbs.
This was within the budget to replace out high-pressure sodium lights. We'll be focusing this work basically in between Jefferson and the railroad tracks moving west in the magnetic addition. This will pretty well go all the way down to Bennett Street and then back to Dilworth, so that big chunk of our city, about 10%, of our lights. We bid it out, 125 of them, and the bids came in significantly under what we had anticipated, so we increased our, our quantities to come closer to what we'd budgeted.
Question?
Will these be as bright, brighter or duller? Because LEDs usually aren't quite as-
Well, there, it's a, it's a, it's a white light as opposed to a more of a yellow type of light that you see off of high-pressure sodium. You won't see, the photometrics, you won't see a whole lot of difference. There will be some, we're, we're standardizing our lighting where some of these area lights we've, we've had in the past, we'll go ahead and put shoeboxes in there, so. They have, it's about a four-year, just a little under a four-year payback for the fixtures and the energy savings, and they'll have a 10-year warranty on them. What really cost us money is sending crews out to change out bulbs and ballasts, so this will save a significant amount of money in service work.
Are these going to be equal, the bids are much less than the other ones. I mean, I'd question a good deal sometimes.
Yeah, they've got a, they've got a 10-year warranty, and the, the vendor is out of Bolivar, and the product is basically been out in the West Coast for quite some time and is moving towards the Midwest, and from what I understand or what I've gathered is they're wanting to get product in this area to, to be able to show off. I visited with a, Hava had a bid opening a week after us, and they were, they were actually higher than some of the competitors in this bid, so obviously they're just wanting product in the area.
Richard, do you plan on changing out every light in town before it's all said and done?
We've got budgeted money each year in our CIP to, or we've got plans in our CIP to do that, yes.
And you say you have how long on the payout on this?
These, these will have about a little under a four-year payback on energy.
This is about 2% to 10% of our total inventory, so if we did this once a year, it takes us 10 years to replace all the lights.
These will be, they will do a better job lighting the area than what we ended up with on commercial.
Yeah, I mean, because a lot of these lights that we're replacing out are just area lights. They're not, some of those lights on commercial, they were, we were putting over 400 watts out. We were lighting up that area like, you know, like a ball field.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Council Bill 4061 is passed and is ordinance 5313. Council Bill 4062 deals with the purchase of asphalt from Willard Asphalt Paving.
Second.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Council Bill 4062 is passed and is ordinance 5314. Council Bill 4063 deals with the purchase of three police cars, part of our annual replacement program. We've got a number of bids, one of which was significantly lower than that that's being suggested, but did not include the extended warranty that was requested.
I have a question. Is the installation and warranties all in this box? The light bar and the radio off, everything, including installation?
The, the, I think part of the installation as far as the vehicle.
Okay, because when we bought the light bars last month, it was $1,000 for the, I mean, the cameras. It was $1,000.
Yes, the cameras would be, the, the price that is included in-
Including installation.
If you look at the whereas statements, it was to be, oh, they're supposed to include-
It doesn't say, you're allowed to purchase the cameras.
There's three different cameras. No, it could, so we can do one of two things. It can either be amended because it was to include all the equipment associated, which is the other whereas statement, the $20,550, so that did not make it down into the law. But, and so that is the, that needs to be approved so that we can purchase and equip the car or some of the, so we can either bring it back in two weeks as a standalone, or we can amend it to include the $20,000 as was shown in the bid tab because it was to be included in the, in the, in the law itself.
Because I don't have to talk, I'll remember.
I'll second that movement.
Okay. So, the amendment will be for, let me squeeze it. The amendment will be for, to add the additional cost of ancillary equipment as required to transform the vehicles at a cost of $20,550, which will include outfitting it with cameras.
So, all in the total of those two?
That's correct, which is that 106.
106.
106, 833 divided by three cars. Yep. I hope you guys liked the format because I was trying to show, show that picture.
Any other questions?
One, one other question. We're buying three, getting rid of one. We use, got to use the other two?
Yeah, and Chief can talk a little bit about this, but the-
We're going to repurpose two.
We're going to repurpose two of those.
Okay.
And then one's going to actually go for, completely out of our system, but we're going to repurpose two of them.
Is that going to break something else loose? The domino going to keep?
Yes.
I'll tell her.
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, I need a motion and a second on the floor before we can amend it.
Move to approve. Though the amendment? Or all of it?
No, this is, no, this is just a first and second on the floor so that we can do the amendment.
Ah, okay.
So, you're the first and second.
Okay, and then I believe it's Hurney and Councilman Suter made the first and second on the amendment. Okay, Hurney.
Yes. Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Okay, the roll call on the amended bill be Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second to second. Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Excuse me, I missed Jordan.
Jordan, yes.
Jordan and Hurney.
[laughing].
And Suter.
Yes.
Council Bill 4063, as amended, has been passed and is ordinance 5315. Council Bill 4064 deals with contract for design and engineering services on Captain Street. Most approve? Any questions?
What, what do you foresee, Richard, being the outcome? What are we, what are we really trying to do?
Well, we have budgeted to rebuild the section of Catherine from Lincoln all the way up to Main, and this would be the engineering of that project.
Are we going to make that street wider or?
Widen it some, curb and gutter, and do utility improvements as well as stormwater improvements.
That included utilities. You were going to redo the utilities also?
Yeah, there, there's, there's clay sewer lines in the middle of the road, and then also cast iron water lines that set off the side of the road. We'll be replacing all those out.
This is just engineering.
Yeah, this is just the engineering. Just the engineering.
Any further questions? Did we get a motion? Okay.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Hurney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Council Bill 4064 has been passed and is ordinance 5316. That concludes the first and second ratings. There being no new first ratings, we'll move to old business. Does anybody have anything they'd like to speak to? And we'll move to comments and start, Chief, with you. Chief?
No.
Lena? Chris Allen?
No. I've got two items. I've got two items. Number one, on March 2nd, we will be doing a convoy over to Fort Leonard Wood to really show our support in this PE supplement. We are having a bus leave from the Civic Center at 3:30 that day. If you'd like to ride the bus, let me know. I also plan to probably take a couple of city vehicles so we can pile into there if you'd like to really show our support. If you would, let me know so I can make appropriate arrangements. If we get enough folks, then we'll probably get a second bus, because, and I know a couple of folks went last time, and it's a real good event to show the big army how important Fort Leonard Wood is to us. So, that's the first thing. Second thing is, I will be in Jeff City on Wednesday testifying against a bill, House Bill 662. The legislature thinks that the city municipality should be responsible for removing all telecommunication infrastructure within their right of way at our cost and use their contractors without even going through a bidding process, and so that is a law that we're adamantly opposed to, and so MMAL has asked me to come up and tell Lebanon's story on how it would be detrimental to us, so I'll be up there Wednesday at a hearing in the House for that. So, there is, as I continue to say, there are several pieces of legislation that is coming out of Jeff City that does affect us greatly, and it's taking either revenue away from us or increasing our costs, so that's something that we definitely want to be mindful of. Any questions for me?
We'll move to council comments. Chuck?
I'd just like to encourage everybody to show your support with this thing at Fort Leonard Wood because it does make a difference. And Fort Leonard Wood was very well represented, a lot of people last time, and people noticed that, and whether you think Fort Leonard Wood is a, you derive benefit from that or not, you do. Everybody around here in the area with the money to put into the system, we need to keep that and show support for that as everything we can get. Hopefully, two or three buses. That's all I've got.
I just wanted to comment, the city of Lebanon lost a lovely lady this week, Helen Cowan, the former-